Let me do this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the giving justice for all.
All right, I don't think we have to worry about songs and stuff holders. You all right? We can do the hymn like, you know, we did.
You're not at the public comment point yet.
All right, new business, approve gap elimination adjustment and upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the gap elimination adjustment resolution be approved as presented.
Second, discussion?
Want to say anything?
No, it's just that we're getting in, just under the wire because the ledge is going to be looking at the budget vote very soon, so if we didn't do it this week, we would've missed a vote, so thank you all.
I think it's Tuesday.
Yeah, so thank you all very much.
And I just wanted to thank everybody who had a part in this, including Tom, because as we all know, the GEA is the one piece that we can identify that has made the biggest difference in school districts. For us alone, it's worth 7.7 million over the course of the last six years. If you take a look at even small districts, like some of our adjacent districts, they're at 6 million, so it is the one very easy factor for us to take a look at and say, what can we do? And the PTA also adopted a resolution asking for the GEA to be eliminated within two years, but this resolution, as everybody's asking for it, to be eliminated immediately, because we just believe it's bad for children.
Can I make one more comment?
Please.
On Saturday at our community forum, in fact, I believe so strongly in what we're talking about with gap elimination adjustment, for those who were at the Monday gap elimination adjustment meeting and/or the one that was held the week before, we did get the presentation for it, so what we're going to do is we are going to share it with the community to let them know, you know, the transfer into dollars from here to downstate and actually what it means for our district as well, because it does have significant impact, so.
That's good of you.
So, just to further that conversation of what Tom just said, I also wanted to thank those people who went to these presentations. There was one in February in Kenton that Tom attended, and then there was one this past Monday? Monday, in Ellicottville, and Kelly LaRosa, Jeff Cervone, Tom Murphy, Kathy Klopp, Sheila Harris, Tiffany Quaz, and our own Mike Burns all attended, and my understanding is it was a really great presentation.
It was very good. I wish I could explain it as well, like I did.
Tom's going to try on Saturday.
And I will not do as well a job as he did, I'll guarantee you that, but that's okay, I'll try.
And I just wanted to say, I'm really sorry that I missed it, but I was a little tied up at ECMC with my dad, so, but I just wanted to thank everybody who went.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Item three, executive session, upon the super recommendation of the superintendent of the Board of Education.
Yep, geez.
Education in our executive session to discuss the employment and financial history of a particular person.
Second, discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Up on the screen. See, we're going to project up, we're going to project up on the screen, so if I turn around, that's why.
Okay, what we're looking at here is a blue screen. No, when it comes up, there we go. Okay, what we're looking at here is basically an extension of what we have seen before. So, on the left side, I'll start with the left side first, the left side is proposed reductions or revenue increases. When you have a budget gap of about 2.1 million dollars, it's a little bit more than that, but when you have a budget gap of 2.1 million, you can make it up one of two ways. You can either reduce your expenses, or you can increase your revenues. One of the two ways, it doesn't really matter which. For the most part, revenues tend to remain fairly static, so you tend to focus more on reducing your expenses. But in all honesty, it's either reductions or revenue increases, one or the other, to make up for that 2.1. I'm going to show you a couple of things first. I'm going to show you the bottom line, even though I think I was giving Don a very hard time for going ahead to the end at the last BAT meeting, but still. There we go, mouse working. Okay, so we're about 2.1. Right now, bottom line of what we're going to look at today, we've come up with potential ideas that are just under 2.1 million dollars. So, what does this tell you? We have not closed the gap fully yet, and the other thing that I would point out, all the ideas that are up here, I will guarantee you, not all of these are going to happen. So, you know, these are ideas for you guys, the board, to look at, to see what you like, what you don't like, where we need to go back to the drawing board, find more. I will say, a lot of thought has gone into this, ideas from the BAT members, from you guys, from the administrators, community members, they're up here. Some of them, you may say, great idea, some you may say, what the heck is that all about? It didn't matter how good, how bad they were, it's ideas, again, as to ways to close the budget gap, so.
So, if I could just for a moment, the reason it was so important for us to have this special board meeting, and I thank all of you for taking the time to come, is because it's the opportunity for you to have discussion, and that's really what this is about, is to have discussion, so that it's, it's the administrative team that is bringing this to you, because it really is the board's jurisdiction over the budget. But, but I'd like to entertain a question to Tom on this one. We just adopted the resolution for the GEA, which to us was worth about 1.3 million, but a question has-
1.1 something.
I knew you'd say that, 1.1 million, and it's been that way every single year. But a question has come my way that says, why does it always seem, when it comes time to budget time, that it's 2 million, 2.1 million, 1.3 million? Where do these numbers start from?
Here, or-
Just in general, it seems, in general, that those are the numbers that people hear.
For the shortfall?
Mm-hmm.
Well, because most districts tend to budget for what they need, so if you're going to do that, your needs are going to be higher than what you can spend, first of all, so you're going to have a shortfall. And number two, you're going to have contractual increases in salaries and normally healthcare that this year will be flat.
I can say, in the larger districts that I've seen, the 1 million, 1.2 or higher, but in some of the smaller districts-
Oh, I've heard larger numbers.
Yeah.
As business officials, we all come together and just to find out where everyone is.
You had a great meeting on that.
And, and we definitely did, and let me tell you, there were some who were far higher than what we are, far. So, maybe that two number is out there, but again, they're all different, so they're not all two.
Okay, so you're not hearing it, it's always been the same?
No.
Okay, that was good. I really wanted to address that question.
Okay.
And then the second one is, can you just talk to me about, especially from that meeting that you went to with the business officials, about where the 1.78 stands in relationship to what you're hearing of other districts around us?
You mean our tax cap?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Our tax cap, and it really, every district is at a different place. Some districts are negative, some are like 4 percent, like Niagara as an example, they thought they were going to be negative, they're actually at like 4. some percent this year, so every district's at a different spot. We didn't have a lot of deductions which we could take out, some districts have a lot of other deductions, I know we've gone over this before, let's say if-
Like a pilot?
A school district has a pilot coming in, paving in lieu of taxes, you can deduct that, which would in effect raise your tax cap. We don't have a lot of deductions, in fact, we don't have any deductions that we can take out.
Like a capital as well?
Correct. There are about five categories they allow you to deduct.
We don't have anything.
We have nothing.
Right.
The only thing that they allowed us to do to go above the 1.46 was a cost of living factor, which for the most part, was almost flat, but it got us to 1.78. So that was the only thing that helped us out in that whole thing, very formula driven.
Short of us having a business comm and open up shops so we can have a pilot for next year, are there other exclusions that you see that we can be focusing on as a district that would help us raise the tax gap for next year?
Really, if businesses aren't coming in, no. The only thing that you can hope for, for an exclusion, and when I say hope for, you don't really want this, but it is an exclusion. If, let's say for instance, retirement rates, let's say with ERs go above a 2 percent increase, the overage above is something that's deductible. You don't want that, but it is, an actual deduction which you can take off. So it's a double edged sword. So the only ones, for the most part, that are really just truly good for us are the pilots are exom obviously.
Because even a capital project referendum wouldn't help us right away, because there's no expense on, or no debt service on it, is that true?
There's, well, there will be debt service once the borrowing begins-
But not next year?
No.
Right. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, and I'm just pointing out to everyone, if you see me squirm during this presentation, it has nothing to do with the finances, I just got my hair cut before, I have little hairs sticking all around, so, so that's the only reason that I'm squirming, so let me just say that right from the start. All right, so again, most of this you have seen from what we had for the first round.
But the order is different.
The order is definitely different.
In keeping with all our goals and our visions, we put instructional first, so.
And the last time we all talked about this, we had come up with about $980,000 worth of reduction, so now you see we're a little bit over too, so obviously there are additionals that you're going to see. The first one that we all saw before, 10 percent reduction, supplies, materials across the board. Since then, we've had several people step up to the plate to say, where can we actually cut back? Do you want me to go through these individually?
Well-
How do you want me to do this?
No, let me, because I know, some of these are before and you've seen them, but if I could just run, and I'm going to leave you for the money part, how's that?
Sure.
If I have questions. Whenever you see a special ed reduction, it's not because we're getting rid of something other than the fact that that student may be graduating or going back to their home school or so. So this is an anticipated reduction based on our enrollment of special ed students coming from Sean.
Now, the one thing that I would just let everyone know, is traditionally, most districts leave a little bit of breathing room in special education, because if you get one child who comes in that you did not plan for, Sean, I think you can verify this, you get the bill. You don't have a choice in this, you foot the bill. So if you have nothing built in whatsoever, you're really-
That's right. This is a good place to put some money back in, just knowing. The physical therapist was double budgeted from last year, I think it was a midnight find on Tom's part. Curriculum materials, you wanted to talk a little bit about that, or did you readjust that?
It is readjusted down, this is one that is a top area, because it is directly student base, it's also tied into our textbook aid that we actually get, so there's only so low that we actually want to go on that.
So you don't want to, you don't want to lose your state aid on it, especially on textbooks or on technology and on library funds, so you want to make sure that you don't go below whatever it is that they're going to aid per student, because it's a particular amount.
And I will make a promise to you, we will not lose our state aid, we will not, not get every cent we actually can, so if it is, it becomes an issue of saying, we need to cut somewhere else, or lose the money from the state for not spending it, we're going to make sure we spend it. In fact, even Kelly can say this, we had the discussion, make sure we spend every cent this year, because the state reimburses you for everything you spend. If you don't spend it, they're just not giving it back to you, so it's, you know, we definitely make sure we get the money back from the state.
Now, the textbooks, or the booklets the ladies stood up and talked about, are we getting those, are the kids going to be using them?
If we can, if we can have either Kelly or Lauren's, because they don't go unused, I mean, that's, in the one class.
Okay, so that wasn't currently this year?
They were sent home last year, the year before, I'm not sure.
Okay.
They're used anymore, we're using materials that are aligned to the new standards.
Okay.
So anything we order, teachers will be using.
Okay.
And I think also that you're wanting to combine the gap with the transitional year, when we were actually switching from the old curriculum to their state common core, so we, it was a year we ended the gamble of our old program and a new program, and that switch happened when your state did not have modules out. So they said you were going full blown common core without modules being out. So, teachers are saying, will we have materials to use since those aren't ready for us yet? So you made that transition mid-year, not like what you would have?
Mm-hmm. I think that's a really good example, because the same thing happened in math, in the, in the high school, between algebra and geometry. Which one are you teaching to? And where's the transition in the middle of it? But I would say that after that meeting, that both Kelly and Lauren certainly had some conversations with their teachers, did you not?
Yeah, there's some very strong dealings.
About using things you ask for.
Yeah.
Right?
Because I think often, if there is for some reason something left over, we get always multipurpose it, because we have after-school academic intervention programs, we have after-school clubs, we have students who need one-on-one help that's at a different level, whether it be enrichment or lower level material. So, if those materials truly weren't, we should be storing those, because they give us materials to pull from. So if we had, for example, a second grader who needed first grade materials, we could have pulled from those, or vice versa. If you were a first grader who needed higher level material, and it's only one student, now you wouldn't have had to order those, because you would have stored those somewhere. There's definitely a more creative way to deal with that issue than how it was dealt with.
But if we don't know, I would say, if we don't know it's not being used-
Right.
There's not a lot we can do until someone comes up and shows us, it's not used.
Right, that was the first time anybody heard about that.
Sure.
But it gave us an opportunity to address it with our teachers, make sure people are making smarter decisions. And I think it also has to do with a conversation that happened at BAT, which Kelly and I talked about, we talked about it with Mr. Murphy, it seems like a logical place to also make a reduction, but if people have to realize that we could save eight for after-school.
That's right.
And if we don't use that money, they will give us less to follow up here.
Right.
So someone might say, well, don't order those again. Well, if we don't spend that money on appropriate instruction materials, we're not saving the district money, because it wasn't district money, it was state aid money, that if you have to use in its entirety, or you don't get it back again next year.
Now, for moving forward with the common core and the materials, are you, do you know better, the materials that you need, that you're going to be able to order for next year, and it's materials that we're actually going to use? Yes.
Okay. Good questions. The conference line, number eight, basically, if we, in fact, we go back up to number one and say that we're going to have reductions in conferences, and if you follow down the line here too, you'll see that the only conferences that we're proposing to approve for next year are those that come from BOSI's, because we get reimbursement on our substitutes when we utilize BOSI's conferences, it will bring a reduction in terms of the costs that we have for conferences. So, when we have a COSER, which is what we go in for in terms of our substitutes with BOSI's, we're at about a 56 percent reimbursable rate on that too.
Does everyone know what a COSER is? It's when we-
Why don't you talk about a bit?
Purchase services through BOSI's, they group them all together in groups, they call them COSERS.
Like a co-service, right.
Right, so COSER, so you can have something for alternative education, you can have something for financial package software, whatever you're buying is all grouped together under what they call COSERS, just how they determine.
No, it's perfect. So in this particular case, we would realize a savings in terms of conferences, and, and this would probably be a good point where we talk about COSERS, because in the last board meeting, when we were talking about sending our students again on a COSER to CTE or to VOTAC, the, the cost upfront is $8,400 a year for students, but that's before the reimbursable rate, and I want to thank Paul for, for letting me know, I didn't clarify that really well enough, that each year that a student does go, is it each year or when they finish the program?
For the reimbursement?
For the VOTAC.
Well, the way that we're reimbursed for BOSI's-
Is the year after.
-is about a year, you're reimbursed.
So the year after. So while we pay it upfront, the next year we get reimbursed back, and that's really important for the board to realize on anything that's a COSER. So it could be the CTE programs, it could be academies that they're starting, it could be the conferences, it could be materials that we get, because Kelly gets a lot of the materials through BOSI's as well. So, the reimbursable rate is something that I don't think I've emphasized well enough, so I did, I wanted to make a point to do that now.
But in all fairness, I would say we don't get reimbursed for everything from BOSI's.
Right.
So, it's categorized, so what you get reimbursement for and what you don't.
Right. CPC Summit again is a special ed, so we don't believe that we'll have a student going there next year. Field trips, right now, K6 is funded by PTA, but those that are 712 are paid for by the district unless they're funded separately. The recommendation on this one is to only fund field trips that are, that are, the money is coming from outside the district, so that may be worthy of a conversation point, I'll stop for a minute.
So the field trips would still happen in their entirety, so it's not cutting out field trips at all.
Well, if they were, if somebody funded them, they would.
If someone funds them, so it's just a funding structure that would change, so moving forward, taking them out of the budget, what you would see is no longer to see it funded, so we would see the donation come in, and then we would increase the appropriations in equal amount to pay for the field trip.
Do you have some of the field trips, for example?
Any one of the principals can probably name a couple of field trips they had in their buildings.
Well, if you do K, but if you do K6 though, then they would be funded by PTA.
The older ones.
Yeah, there, the older ones.
Future business leaders of America, you have-
Senior trip?
Oh yeah, they have a conference they go to, or-
FBLA.
I'm thinking about the whole class, where the whole class goes.
Like the eighth grade field trip?
We might fund some of that. No? Can you think of some then, Mark, that are completely funded by the district and not not-
For the entire class?
Yeah. So they're all entirely fundraising for the entire class? Then which one, 712, I don't want to put you on the spot.
We go to the Bible and the Bible and, um, mock trial, well, county festivals, the AP kids, math kids go down and compete at-
FBLA?
FBLA, they cover their own.
They cover their own.
Lynn Morgan takes the art kids on a field trip every year.
The art students. I think, I think the word competitions is important, because we do do a lot of competitions. We did the art craft with the art, that's right, Barb is right. Like-
And there's some smaller ones that go along with this.
Would be all county and all state?
Law kids, they go to your county home center and common core.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Are we picking up the transportation also, or is that-
Yeah, that's, that would all part of that cost, transportation, everything goes-
The transportation, if there's any admissions that go with those things, the kids pick that off the top, that would just be-
So we're eliminating that?
It's a proposal.
The revenue source has to come from somewhere else rather than out of our budget.
Which is possibly more fundraising that the kids have to do if they want to go on these field trips?
They can't be required field trips, because you can't require a student to pay to go.
Why didn't you require?
No, I know you didn't, but I just wanted to make sure.
Or it could be PTA.
PTA could choose, we, we, we could submit to PTA to fund something, and they could choose to fund it.
Okay.
A foundation could say, we're going to give you money to use towards field trips, I mean, it doesn't have to be just fundraising.
Again, the next one is, is the runs to preschool. Again, it's a change in how we do business in terms of special ed. In this particular one, Sean, I'm going to ask you, because I'm not sure where she go, is that one connected to possible outsourcing for the special ed?
Oh, that's the one with the nurse.
So that is connected to the possible outsourcing. Years ago, Eden actually would outsource to another company for their special ed bus run, especially because they might have a nurse on who doubles up as an aide. And so what we have proposed to Sean is to take a look at that, what that structure, or to Rose, what that structure would look like for special ed only, then we wouldn't be paying the benefits and having to worry about substitutes when a, when a nurse is on, onboard and takes the day off.
And this is one child.
Right, is there anything else you want to add to that?
Yeah, there's three on the bus, but there's one child that needs a nurse.
The nurse.
That would need a attendant, so if we can combine that, but it is so hard, we had such a hard time, I had one of my school nurses here riding at the beginning of the year with me, and then I had him, and we finally got-
Yeah, Sean was riding the bus.
So we got, we got to look outside of our own.
And they have a bigger pool to pull from.
Helping out Springville, I had the same complication, finding a nurse to ride on the vehicle as well, and didn't find a company that provided a nurse.
Okay.
But the other company, Cross, they are nurse, that was a point that I'm still utilized, so I'd be willing to cross train for another company to facilitate a nurse.
You must know, I always wondered, Rose, is, has it ever been entertained of using another school district? We're doing that now with Springville.
This is with using Springville and the nurse is required, and that's cost.
And now my student, that makes it Springville, student, I have a student, and so Springville's letting us, my student on their bus, I have on their bus, and a nurse, and we go to where the little boy goes. But next year, my student has to go out to either Spire or Catalation and older school, and there's my, because we're all, so I'm on my own with the little guy, so we have to find- Well, how about North Collins or Hamburg? They have nobody that needs a nurse. Frontiers? Very rarely do you get that, these are our most severe students and-
But we do do that now, we pick up Springville, North Collins, we combine, absolutely.
Rosie always does, yeah, she always should, we just have nobody with a nurse.
I utilize, as well as they, we shared services with her for years. But as for finding a nurse, Hamburg had a student that needed a nurse, but they were contracting out because of the same situation. It's so difficult to find a nurse that wants to ride, help us, and work as an attendant also, and then if we find one, and she needs time off or he needs time off-
You've got a sub.
Find a sub, and then you're stopped.
And you know, just like, no, we can't even find subs for all nurses here, we go into the other side, so this is the smarter way to do it.
So we're excited about this as a proposal. Moving on down, the midday runs for Regents exams in January and June, basically speaking, students would come in on the morning run for a morning exam, or come in on a morning run for an afternoon exam. We would supervise them, they could stay, and then there would be the regular bus run home. I've done this in two different districts, people have some concerns about, what will the kids do all day? For the most part, I would say to you, that I've never seen more than three or four kids stay, because there's always a ride with some parent who recognizes that they won't sit all day long, but they would be supervised.
Would the children be able to come in, like if their exam was in the afternoon, they can come in the afternoon, they don't have to-
If they can, if they can get here on their own, we just wouldn't go, take run or run to get them, yeah. A 10 percent cut in the musicals, both elementary and high school, and the junior, senior high school, and the way that that could run is basically for it to go back to them and say, what makes the most sense with their administrator, to where they choose to be not funded. That's the best that we can do, if it's something, if it's a line in the contract that we would pay is to not fund that one.
And what I would just say with that, it's not that the musicals wouldn't happen, and we took a look at, to say, what we do to share the, the cuts across the board. With musical, they do also have their own funds, which they do have balances in, so they would have to dip into their balances just a little bit.
They'd waste increased revenue.
Yes, they could.
Thank you.
Yeah, they could.
Yeah, they charge, yeah, because he could go to that, I think, a deal.
But on that note, last week was a lot of fun, the Wedding Singer was an awful lot of fun, and the one coming up for, for the, this weekend is supposed to be awfully beautiful too. Extracurriculars, again, proposing a limit of number of students that have to be a part of that extracurricular in order for the extracurricular to be funded. Department chairs would be to reduce the funding of four, there's no decision as to which one of those it would be, just a, this came up last year and it's back on the table.
What, what does that entail? Six, four, about four grand each?
Roughly. Some make more, some make less, it depends, Aaron.
Well, that's what I was going to ask you, aren't some of the, can't you just give them a different, a new person, the department head, don't they, don't they go by their own pay scale?
It's all within the contract as to what the pay scale would be, and how many people are within the department, and how many years they've been doing it. In the, in the past-
Now, what, how would that affect the departments? How would that affect the department that didn't have the department heads?
I've, I've had this happen to me when I was a principal, and it's, it's a big deal, depending on what the role of the department heads is. We have been working really hard, Kelly and Jeff have been meeting with the seven through 12 department heads this year, to make it very programmatic based, very curricular, instruction based. Lucian and I had a conversation today about taking a look at technology integration for[1669.98] Lucian and I had a conversation today about taking a look at technology integration for department shares. ETA has been wonderful over the past couple of years of doing an MOU so that they actually take a less stipend. And this board has not funded the K6 or the associate shares for a number of years. We bring ideas to you for you to ask exactly these type of questions. Okay.
I'll just comment, I don't know a lot about that, but just common sense to me says that each department needs some, a chairman. So I don't, I don't know enough about it, but I, I don't know if I would eliminate that one.
Well, I mean, it depends on the size of the department too. I mean, there's certain departments that are not that big that would require a chair that, or a higher, I mean.
I think, what, like, what's their job? What's, what is their job?
What we can do for you for next week, if you'd like, just in the essence of, essence of time, is to bring a current job description. And then we don't have one set up for next year, although there are proposed changes for the descriptions for next year. And I can kick it out to you so that you can all see it. It's a great question. Good?
Yeah.
Okay. Cutting the summer, summer days, there are 10 summer days for the assistant principal. The assistant principal right now is a 10-month plus 10-day. So if the students are not in now, this assistant principal is also not in. So a typical teacher schedule, but plus 10 more days in the summer. The next one with the question marks is to get rid of all non-mandated electives. I would say to you that most courses that we offer that are electives in the high school are, that are courses that are not core, math, science, English, social studies, and even some of those are electives. It was a great conversation with the administrative council that there are schools in the north country where the kids are really having trouble when they get into their freshman year in college because they're not the programs that are being offered. And even some of the smaller schools in western New York are the same way. We offer, I don't know, Mark, would you say a lot of electives? I don't think we offer a lot of electives. I really don't. I mean, coming from my mindset, yeah, my mindset, we offer a whole lot more and we can do really well with the number of electives that we offer students. Plus, there is a mandate that students are supposed to be in school for five, at least five hours a day, plus PE to be considered full-time. So you have to really care what you choose to cut because you might not be able to meet that state mandate. A change in state minimum graduation requirements. We currently require 24 hours, state reg say 22. This point 34, engineering technology position would be.
Well, why don't we hold off until we hit the right side?
Stay here?
When we do the staffing.
Just leave that one out?
Yep, for now.
Are there any questions on the ones that I've gone over so far?
This will make sense once they see what we're in the right.
Understood, okay, yeah, because that one, so ignore, ignore the redlined one. A loss of a half a day in March 19th of next year, which would cause it to be a recess day, making 188 calendar days instead of 189. That is actually the calendar that we're running off of this year. We have 188 days, you have to have 180. So taking one day out is worth, is worth about $8,500 to us in terms of bussing, the kitchen, the cafeteria monitors. Having said that, all the extra days that are getting added in this year have also been an $8,500 increase each time we do that this year. We will be going to a full day, May 23rd, because of the snow day yesterday, which I have to tell you, I agonized over for hours. But it must be a full day because state ed will not allow you to have more than four half-days in a semester, and we will already have four. Closing a building on summer Sundays and the associated energy costs, you want to talk more about that?
Certainly. So what we're looking at in, in this one is kind of twofold. We know that we're putting a proposed fee structure, uh, structure out there for building usage. If we actually have it and can make up a revenue, this one may not necessarily need to be. If, let's say, for instance, nobody's using it, no one wants it on Sunday as an example, then just, you know, or it just depends on how you structure. Either we have this or we have the revenue, one of the two. But just looking at the utilities of what we would have on Sundays if we had the buildings open, paying for the lights and the air conditioning, all that, are 1,208. That's for eight Sundays.
This $4,000 BOSI's coser for certification right now is a $4,500 coser. This is mostly, and Barb could speak more detailed about it if she, if she wanted to, is when we have questions. And we'll give a call to Nancy Burns over at Erie One, Erie One.
Right, oh, Erie Two.
Erie Two, Erie Two. We've left 500 in there so that Barb has one question for next year, that's all she got.
So only one teacher can come and ask me if I should.
Well, they can, they can ask you, you might just have to pick up the answer.
They can ask me and I'll have to say, sir.
Summer hours, this would not take an effect for this coming summer, but a proposal on the table for the following year would be for CSEA, who does work 12-month, to accrue extra hours during the school year. And then we would be closed one day a week in the summertime. This wouldn't be a requirement for all clerical or all 12-month CSEA because some things we just don't have the time to take a day off with a short summer, like tech might be an example, or just, or superintendent's office might be another one. But we might also ask people to move into a particular area. Again, it's on the energies cost, actually shutting down.
And again, I'll say this, the reason why it cannot happen this summer, you can't pay someone ahead of time for hours they haven't worked. So they have to build up the hours if we're going to do this this summer and use them for the next.
Pool speakers, we're just budgeted in another area. You want to talk about the internal auditor?
Internal auditor, we have touched on this before, but for school districts, when you fall below 1,500, you're no longer required to have an internal auditor. We have claims auditor who reviews everything, everything that we spend, period. You have the internal auditor who reviews areas of weaknesses or potential areas they, they could see that you could have issues with. We had a transportation audit this year, we did very well on it. They had some suggestions on how to tighten that up. They were already looking for what they'd be looking at for this coming year. I have placed a call into them because again, we would just be going under 1,500 next year. I think we're at about 1,472 that we're estimating for next year. So the question I had is, and they're checking for us right now, the auditors are actually checking, make sure we're following the rules, whether or not you can do that the first year or you have to wait till one full year passes. So I don't have the answer on that, but they are checking in. And I even checked my email before coming tonight, and I don't have an answer back yet. But it's, if we don't need it, it's on the board.
This not refilling of the maintenance supervisor position, this was Jim Walter's position, he retired. It was slated to be refilled as a fields expert, so we need to come in and help out with our fields. So that's on the table. The retirement incentive is moving. Outsourcing transportation, outsourcing transportation for special ed. And what about those of walking distance to school and seventh through 12th graders walking in one mile? And bus stop district from Main Street versus door-to-door K6. So I'd like to stay within this entire block for a conversation about transportation. This was not in round three, it is in round four. It came up last year, right about the time I came, and it came up at the last BAT meeting to take a look at transportation. So I, I would open up the floor here for people who've had these conversations before.
Let's ask Rose, what are the rules? What are our New York State rules as far as kids walking or, what, what are we mandated to transport? That's my question.
Within a mile and a half, those students do not, you do not get state aid for them.
So anyone that's within a mile and a half?
We are not required to transport them.
And therefore we don't get aid on them?
There, there are not allowable pupil decimals, is what they call them.
And so in order for us to transport even the students that live right across the road from GLP to GLP or elementary, all of the students in the weather division downtown here, I design routes that are coming in from outside and picking up so that we can get state aid on that driver and that bus as fuel.
But it still limits the state aid we get on that bus because it's not full state aid because we have kids on there who we can't get aid from. So rather than getting full aid or maximum aid on that bus, we might only get half, a three-quarter, depending on how many kids are within that mile and a half range.
If we utilize, which we spoke about last year, and I think next week in the BAT, I will.
Present?
Present the PowerPoint that I did last year, we'll revisit it again to look at it. If we have students walk, even if it's just downtown, sidewalks work, we're looking at saving possibly two buses a year.
The problem we have is so that one, one, whatever, one in a mile radius, I mean, it goes all the way out to Eagles Farm that they would have to walk down 62. I think it's a school. I mean, it's, it's not by road route, it's by the crow flies around the school building. And we ran into this problem last year that, you know, for the people right across the street, which includes my kids, you know, it's not, it's pretty much a no-brainer, they can walk to school except in the whole of vortex. But, you know, the people that don't have sidewalks, they would have to walk down 62. I mean, you have a safety hazard there as well as.
But however, what I would say is, you don't have to necessarily go the full mile and a half. Because we can, we do right now, every student who wants to be transported, you could do a half mile, a mile. I mean, if, you could do anywhere within that mile and a half range, so.
Because it makes safe zones. The state allows the board and the district to work together to decide what they want to transport. If you choose to transport within that mile and a half, you're taking down that expenditure. In the presentation that I'm going to present, I, I have the state guidelines in there. It, it puts a lot of responsibility back onto our parents as well. But we can choose the area that we choose to transport.
Well, what's a safe? Tell them what a safe zone is.
A safe zone?
Jennings.
A safe zone would be what we would determine would be the best of our ability for a child to walk and be safe. Okay, so maybe Jennings, you might determine is not a safe area, C3 to walk. Okay, so you might take that off the table. But for students along school view with a sidewalk, you may deem to be a safe area.
So that could take.
I think a mile and a half gets up to Mr. Campbell's house. From the district.
Oh, yeah, because when we were kids and they did do, cut the buses, we had carpool for a year.
And you can see this one's not bringing it out to a mile and a half. You as a board can make a decision that, you can break that down even less if you chose to.
Because there's a safe zone, we could say, okay, you may live, all right, a mile and a half from this school, and now you're on the safe zone, we're going to pick up your kids.
Like you, you as a board and the district will have to work together as a team and decide what, what boundaries and what guidelines work.
A safe zone means they can walk.
Safe, within a safe zone, it is safe. It's the safest possible area for walking.
Jennings Road is not a safe zone.
Right.
So now.
But that's to your definition.
Right.
The Department of Education says that it's up to the parents in the district to decide.
See, I thought it was different last year.
I thought it was different too. I thought we had to, because I thought it was.
It was right when I came, so I can't.
That was a mile from the school, you're not picking up.
Right.
Well, as I said, she will have a full presentation on Wednesday. I'm not going to speak off the top of my head because I don't know.
The zones that we showed will be the same ones that we show again, and it is there. We showed a mile, and we showed a mile and a half, and.
So.
So can we pick up some kids within that mile and a half and not pick up some kids within that mile and a half?
That would be your decision.
But if they determine they can do that, correct?
It's up to the district.
I thought it was different last year too.
So it's not all or nothing?
We can go back and take a look.
You have to look at your.
But I just see parents, especially if you elude, you know.
You would definitely get that under this.
I'm paying taxes, you know, school exorbitant taxes for the school district, and my kids aren't being picked up by a bus, but someone else within that exclusion zone is being picked up by the bus.
If, if you were going to do a safe zone like that, I would say you'd want some obvious criteria. If there are kids who would be crossing 62, that could be.
I'm just, I'm just giving the devil's advocate here.
Absolutely.
You know, I mean, if you do seventh through 12, I would, it'd be less. But I mean, like in the line, $30,000, the one walk to school, I mean, you talk to GOP as well as elementary kids in that $30,000 line, you're, you're going to have a.
Yeah, like you had said, Mike, I mean, you can't, our weather is.
Yeah.
I mean, even seventh through 12, in my opinion, they don't need to be walking to school, and it's 10 degrees outside.
Six degrees this morning.
And they can tell their green fits about it.
Yeah, yeah, all uphill, both ways.
Uphill both ways.
Don't deprive them.
They're a fuck too.
Function at that time.
It's, as complicated as it sounds, there are some districts who, when the temperature reaches a certain level, do pick up. I don't know how they reroute. Rose, can, can you talk about that next week, not now? But how that might happen, because I know that there are some school districts that reroute when the temperature drops.
I have pine and ham with that.
Yeah.
A few years ago, where it was a week below zero Fahrenheit, and we, in Arcade, I don't know if you guys are familiar with Arcade, the students from that Arcade Park area all the way out there, up Route 98 to Castle, all of those students are walkers. They have to come all the way back down to Arcade Elementary in Delavan. And I know because my house is on the end, and when I walked with my kids from K through 4, it was 15 minutes, and it's all the way from the bridge on 16th all the way back to Delavan Elementary.
It's a long way.
Wow.
So.
I, I walked a mile when I was in kindergarten. I did, all by myself.
So Rose will have an entire presentation for the BAT next week on this, but there's one more piece I want to, I want to talk about.
And before you do, I just want to say, I know it's 7 o'clock and some people are leaving their PTA or some other things to go, please don't think people are being rude by having to step up and step out, so.
This bus stop district from Main Street versus door-to-door K6. Bye, guys. Bus stop district from Main Street versus door-to-door K6. This one basically is, is we will go down and pick up on all those perpendicular streets from Main Street, so they would just simply be walking up to Main Street and then be picked up at more of a bus stop.
That makes a lot of sense.
Very typical for school districts to have bus stops.
And they're with their friends, there was somebody else.
Absolutely, yep. So we'll make sure that that's on the, the docket for the next one too. This one is certainly a negotiable piece, we believe, but drivers for sports being paid a flat rate versus an hourly rate. Winter routes alone are worth $3,900. In the past, Darian Lake was an example where the bus drivers were there for the whole day, but they're basically not responsible for the kids in the middle of the day. So the bus drivers had agreed in that one to be paid for the run there as long as it took to get there, and then to be paid for the run back. They are guaranteed.
Six hours.
Yeah, they're guaranteed an hour and a half.
For the Darian Lake trip, they did agree to, because many times you're there eight to 12 hours, and the drivers to help save the district money agreed to six hours and 100 miles. So even if it was more than 100 miles, we just cut it off to 100 miles, round trip.
Recognizing that they could go for coffee or shopping or anything in the Meesheim?
Well, Darian Lake.
They stay, because there's nothing there.
Kind of Mecca shopping.
They can't really go anywhere.
But for six hours, and many times they're there 12 hours. And I, I don't bring them back unless it's like six driver movement, I'm desperate because it's more than 35 miles one way. Big, it's expensive.
I'm going to drop it down for just a minute on the awards assembly, breakfast of champions. Again, this is just looking for different revenue sources, not dropping the actual program. The district does fund this program right now. One of the questions that was brought up, I believe it was either at one of our community forums at the BAT, is our buses being unrepairable and why can't we use Auctions International? I'm going to let you talk about that one.
Yep, and the next one as well.
And the one below it too, and the one below that.
Okay, so for the, next to the, the buses and the equipment. Well, first of all, it, it had been noticed that we had some old printing press equipment here that we just have never used, will never use. It's very complicated to get it working, the cost for that, it just doesn't make sense for the district to actually be using. So rather than have the board just access it and decide what to do or who to give it to, why not sell it? Same thing with the buses. Now, we could always take the buses that we've accessed and say, let's trade them in on different buses, but we would actually make more money if we went with something like Auctions International. You're going to see on the 19th, that I believe it is the presses that are on the board agenda. Dave Martin is going to give you a presentation on Auctions International. A lot of districts are actually using them right now. We're going to start small, try on these couple items here, make sure that the revenue's actually working well and then see where we can actually expand it. So again, revenue sources, either cutting the expenses or adding revenue. So this is a, a good one for us to look at, yes.
You know, we, we have a lot of stuff down in the basement also, can we enter scrap?
Yes, this is the beginning of it.
Yeah, to answer your question, yes, and a short, short answer. However, there are certain things you can easily, and some you can't, some are appropriate for the auction, some would not be.
Not even auction, I mean, just metal scrapping.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, don't we already do that?
We do get money for metal scrapping, yes. We do.
Do we ever auction off like the, the, the print presses or whatever they were? I mean, would they possibly still be on the books?
Well, they're on the books right now as a fixed asset.
Any value left on them, are there still being depreciated?
No, there, no, there is no value left to those. Advertising, looking at this as a potential revenue.
Can we step back up?
You can.
Through all the bus stuff.
Yep.
Transportation stuff and that one big thing, and we only really talked about the, the walking piece. But is anybody looking into the outsourcing transportation? I know this has come up for the past three years that I've been on the board. No one's ever looked into it. I mean, I know there's issues surrounding it.
It's going to come up in the presentation at the BAT meeting next week.
Yeah, I contacted Fishers and Carrier Coach for numbers. They said it's going to take a little while to get those numbers to me. Last year, I talked to Carrier Coach before the presentation before, and the numbers were like, last year, for outsourcing like special ed.
And in some cases, I think special ed might make sense to outsource parts, parts of the.
Especially because of a nurse.
The one issue, and we, and I don't know who it was who brought it up last time, about if we outsourced and using our own bus drivers.
Yeah, because that was the biggest bone of contention, is most of the bus drivers.
I think Barb, you mentioned it.
When we went to the conventions, they told us that they can use your buses.
I, I don't know, I don't know of anyone locally who's doing that.
We had a charter company that would allow us to use their buses.
Is there a Leonard?
One of the.
Those are dealers, and they would be leasing.
There was a company I walked up into, okay, we use your drivers and our vehicles.
It would be Leonard, and we'd be leasing. Leonard is a dealer, just like Matthews.
I don't remember who it was, but Leonard did.
I don't know of any local companies that are, and here's the why.
They're all saying that doesn't matter where you are, we'll, we'll get the buses to you.
If you lease them, but leasing is different.
Okay, if you give them to me, because none of our local people.
I'll have to go with my child.
I'm trying to think, all the areas schools, our dealers would lease them to us, but that's a form of.
And maybe that's what it is, because I didn't stand.
Yeah, but that's different than a bus company running your transportation department. That's just a vehicles. The reason most companies would not use your own drivers, because you'd be on their insurance. And now they're insuring your people, and there's such a liability that would go along with it, that I, I wouldn't.
Would leasing the buses be an option? Would leasing the buses be an option?
I mean, from an outsourcing perspective...
But that's not outsourcing, though. The leasing of that is not outsourcing, but...
Leasing, go ahead, sorry.
I'm sorry. Leasing is another form of financing. It is stay-able, and it's three to five years, but it's just like a car or truck for personal...
But totally separate from outsourcing, has nothing to do with the outsourcing at all.
It's not outsourcing, no. And Tom is very crap that a charter company would put their own people in to be covered because there's so much legality behind the scene with the federal government and the Department of Education and the DOT, as well as the insurance companies.
But if we leased them, we would still have our fleet and our, everybody that stayed there.
And leasing, and leasing buses is, again, just another form of financing.
But most outsourcing companies will actually, it's not like Charter or Fisher or someone like that would have bus drivers to cover our area, they would have to hire to...
They would, they would have to hire drivers.
So, which would be a possibility to hire our drivers, since they know the routes.
And that's what's taken Keith and Scott a little bit of time, because they have to figure in the expenditure that they have to put into, you know, running our department, because they would have to purchase more vehicles, and they would have to hire our drivers. So they have to work on those numbers, too, and it's what takes a little bit of time for them to get the numbers.
Would leasing actually get rid of the, the actual maintenance part of it?
It does.
Meaning that we wouldn't maintain the buses anymore, that we would lease them from this company, and they would maintain them, and we would just drive them? Or wouldn't you say leasing?
But that would be another company allowing us to put our drivers in the vehicle, and again, the liability...
No, but didn't you say other districts are leasing buses? Like, as, as a source of, instead of purchasing?
Leasing, okay, leasing, when you go to get a car, you have the option of buying it outright or leasing it. Same thing.
So would we...
Yeah, the dealer takes care of it.
Oh, no, no, you have to take it for oil changes.
But usually take it back to the dealer.
But you're...
But you're still paid.
We still pay.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you lease it, you're still paid.
I'm just saying, you, you have the buses, but you have someone maintain the buses for you, instead of us having a bus shop to maintain the buses.
You mean if there's welding that needs to be done, or anything like that?
Yeah, maintenance and care for the bus, I mean...
No, no, in a lease program, you're still responsible for the, the...
Could we outsource the maintenance aspect?
You would have to, I would have to check with DOT and see the legality of that.
And he's just, thought.
And take it to a repair shop or whatever.
Is there a cost savings to, you know, outsource the actual maintenance of the buses as well?
Let's put it on for next week, okay? Okay. You were gonna talk about, oh, you wanted to go back to the walking?
No, 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 no. You threw it all in one group.
That was.
And we only talked about the walking piece of it.
Okay, so you're good?
I'm good.
Okay, can you go talk about the advertising?
Again, advertising in schools, it is a little bit of a sticky wicket, so to speak, but under certain situations, as long as his, our, as, sorry about that, as long as the companies are not using our children to sell a product, number one, that is a definite no-no. As long as we are following the guidelines of not allowing certain advertising in schools, like, for instance, you don't wanna have a sweets company advertising during the day about, you know, buy, you know, Snickers or something like that. So there are certain regulations that we need to actually adhere to. However, that being the case, we do certain things, like the autism walk, as an example. Is it possible to say, hey, under making sure we follow all the state guidelines of having a form of advertising? Absolutely. So let's set a bar low this year to say, let's see if it works, make sure we're following laws, and then see if we can start working that in.
And the school board attorney is very versed on this, has been really helpful to us, especially when we were looking at the scoreboard. So I, I have full faith that he would keep us in the straight and narrow on that one.
Tom, did you find out if we can sell the name of this, you know, the football field?
Oh, no, we haven't even looked at that yet. You're talking large naming rights for that, you're talking probably...
Well, okay, but like each diamond have a company sponsor?
Um, we would, I'd, we'd have to check that out, so, yeah. Campbell Field.
Campbell Field.
Yes, you could leave a legacy, yes.
So I'm gonna come back up, and I'm gonna say this is also on for a conversation at the Bat meeting next week, which is, which is our athletics. The first proposition that was up was to create a 7, 8, 9 modified model, and then a 10, 11, 12 varsity level. The concern was is that there wouldn't be enough schools to compete with, so we challenged Marissa and sent her back to check that out, which she's still getting answers on, but also to take a look at dropping teams or dropping JV. And so Marissa's done a lot of work, she's not completely done with all the numbers, but she's got some ideas to share with you next week. But if you had some general questions for today on that, just to keep it, her on the right track of what you might be looking for for next week, certainly feel free to ask.
Can I take the last one?
I'm gonna say that, just my personal opinion, 7, 8, 9, I don't particularly like that idea at all. I don't think it's fair for the 7th grader to be competing with the 9th grader. Their skills are totally different, you've got body weights that are different, that 7th grader is probably not gonna get a lot of playing time, I don't care what sport it is. Yeah, I'm not into that at all.
I'm gonna have to say I agree with Patty on that, too.
Yeah, no. I, school sports are different than rec sports, there's competition, so you are going by ability. So, yeah, no, 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 I don't like that at all. How about the charge, charging for sporting events? I mean, really, it's just football, varsity?
You know what you really run into, and there's other events, too, that, gosh, I ran my kid to football for the last, you know, six years, bought him the equipment, I'm doing it, now I gotta pay to go watch him? I have a tough time with that.
Certain school districts, like, my son plays JV basketball, and we would go out to, I think it was Tonawanda or North Tonawanda, and they charged to go to the game.
I used to charge.
I'm not saying that I have a problem with that, I'm just saying it's only ever been football that I've been charged at, but to go to a lacrosse game, I mean, that's like an open field, how would you charge at a lacrosse game? That's, that would be tricky. Or soccer game, so...
You have to tackle them.
Football team could get practice.
Yeah, so that, that just...
Who will be getting that money for, if we charge to come in and see a basketball game? Would it be Blue Steers or...?
Uh, it would be the, and we're talking about how we would actually structure. Number one, I would say this, that all the monies that come into the district, so let's use Special Ed as a good example. So they bring revenues in for kids from other districts, they don't get the money directly back. It goes into the general fund. Marissa is trying to work out some sort of structure where, as, let's say, the cheerleaders need something. Who is the example you gave?
What?
You had an example of some, of something, you were thinking that if they need equipment, that sort of thing, that it could be put towards that.
That's what we do for football. Problem with some other things is it's a contractual issue, that I would rather work out all the details, you know, openly stating.
Fair enough.
But I would say, I mean, in, in its peers form, I would go back to the general fund, unless we can work something else out. Because all the revenues that come into this district pay for all the salaries here that they receive, they just do.
So that'll be next week. And then use of reserves, do you wanna talk about that a little bit?
Yes, we moved up our reserves from 200,000 to 500,000. Reserves is always a hot topic. There are many people who feel we don't use enough reserves, that we have the money stocked away, and we should be using it to its fullest extent. For mine, I will tell you right now, from my conservative standpoint, if you do that, number one, it is, and Colleen, I think you, you're a proponent with reserves a little bit, correct?
Pardon?
You've talked about reserve use in the past, have you not?
Yes.
Yeah. And there are a lot of good parts about using reserves, because we've had a conversation on this in the past. There are a lot of good points of using reserves. The caution I have with that is, again, it's like your savings account. Once you're dedicated to saying, we are using our reserves, you're now requiring that funding stream every year, which we've had this conversation at the last Bat meeting as well. So if you're saying, and at last meeting we're at 200,000, we moved it up to 500,000, you're now saying, we are already stating that every year now, until that's basically exhausted, we're gonna be using 500,000, just to keep us at the same point.
Or find, or find 500,000.
Or five, or find 500,000 elsewhere, which that's probably not gonna happen anytime soon, or cut expenses in the following year to make up for the difference.
Mm-hmm.
So absolutely, it is smart to use reserves, it is smart to use them carefully, but it's not smart to use all your reserves. Because, again, if the GEA is gonna continue for at least another five years, we would have no reserves left in the sixth year, and, and that would be a place we don't wanna be at.
If anybody has any questions about utilization of reserves, go out and look at Frontier's state audit. They have basically 180-some thousand dollars left in reserve, and they're, what, almost 3 million short?
And that will not, that's not even a drop in the bucket for them, so...
They've used their reserve the past three years, they used 5 million out of the retirement reserve, which they shouldn't have used, for general funds, and then, of course, they spent through all their reserves the past two to three years, and they have none now. So going into the next year, or this budget season, they're in a huge hole.
Niagara Wheatfield, what's another example of the same?
They're gonna have to have massive layoffs in order to cut that gap, or...
I'm running district, they're having some layoffs in reserves, I think it's just, I agree with Tom, I just think the numbers are a little too low, but, I mean...
How much, how much do we have in the reserves? And I wish that when we do the public forum, that that reserve is up there for people to see.
Um, I can, I can actually do a full presentation on reserves if you actually want me to do that. But, well, I'll give an example.
Talk about this one.
We don't want that.
All right.
Talk about this one.
For, for example, one of our larger reserves is our...
Oh, we have different reserves?
We have different reserves. But one of our largest reserves that we have is for ERS. We have about $3 million in ERS.
What is ERS?
ERS is for the Employee Retirement System, and to pay that bill. And we right now have just under 3 million in that reserve. This is basically using about a fifth of that reserve. And again, if you're looking at the five-year structure, in five years, that, that fund would be depleted.
But you also pay out each year? Like, you have 600,000, and so that you pay out each year?
Oh, well, our bill's more than 600,000. Our bill this year will be 660,000. So what we're saying is, out of our, you know, appropriations, we're saying, even though we have a bill of 660, we would take one-fifth of that reserve, put it towards that to pay that bill, because you can't just use it for anything, it's gotta go towards the use in which it's intended for. So that would pay for the bill this year, basically. But again, I would caution, you don't wanna bring it all the way up to the limit, just because you don't want to be forced to use that reserve until it's depleted, because you're basically relying on that, so...
So, Tom, would we take some, a little bit out of every reserve?
You could take, uh, you can't take it out of every reserves. You can only take for the bills of which you actually have, because otherwise, if I just said, for the ERS, I wanted to take a million dollars out of ERS, well, first of all, I can't, the district. We couldn't do that. We would be audited, we would be written up inside it, saying, you took out more than what your possible bill is, you cannot do that.
Then they'd fire you.
Uh-uh, no, that too.
I was, I was gonna link to the board members, the Frontier audit was just completed, with the state, and it's, it's got, it's a great write-up about reserves.
Yes, it is. They're, they're in a hard place this year.
Well, and there's some contributing factors that happened to both Niagara Wheatfield and Frontier in there, is that they had a change in leadership, both of them did, in the middle of it, as did Eden. The difference is, is that when Lorraine came in last year as an interim, she halted the plan for Eden and stopped that. Had she not halted that, you'd be heading down the same path. So you're basically starting over, because that money went back into the reserves from last year.
And I think I said this last meeting, it's, it's almost like those districts who can survive, it will thrive. And again, it's kind of, if we can, beat the clock for, for the gap elimination adjustment. So if we're thinking it's gonna be another five years, and I hope the elimination of the elimination would be wonderful, but if not, if we plan to survive and strategically use reserves over, you know, to at least have six years, or if not longer, you should be using a little bit and just supplanting, not totally supporting the budget. That makes sense.
And plus, if you use your reserves now, you're not actually fixing the structural deficit.
No, because...
Because you're gonna have just that big a hole from next year, as well as any additional costs that come in.
It, it's like this, to avoid a cliff, I mean, your, your population's going down, the amount of money that you're getting's going down, so it's a little bit each year. So if you keep maintaining the exact same level of services for year after year, and you still are getting less and less to use, eventually there's gonna be a cliff.
And, and that cliff is exactly what the governor wants. So, I, I mean, it's, it's very, very clear that that's what he wants, is to reduce the number of school districts that are in New York State. Merge them, consolidate them, become a charter, close them, do something. And so it's the survival of the fittest. And that's the complication in this whole thing, is, is that you can't fix a structural problem that doesn't have a, a fix.
Yeah.
It's just not there. So I'm gonna let you go from here.
Um, additional state aid, again, when we get our budget estimates from the state, it starts with the governor's budget of what he would like to see. By no means is that the end game. I will tell you, we have a very strong governor. He's gotten a lot of what he wants in, in his term in office.
Smart.
Um, so we know it's an election year, we know there will be some coming back. I think if it weren't an election year, we wouldn't be seeing as much come back. I tend to be on the conservative side, because hopefully that's why you hired me, is to carefully plan. I will be getting more money back. I would hope it's over 100, but conservatively I'd say it's safe for us to put in 100, once the legislature gets it and looks later in the month on this.
Moving to the right.
Okay, so that's a little under 2.1. That's if we did everything in total, which we know we're not going to do, and hopefully before we leave today, you guys would say, really, if there's an issue with anything on the table? So if we know, I mean, it would definitely help administrators as we go back and, and move...
Well, and it'll help us for Saturday at the community forum as well.
Right. Now, on the right side, let me start by saying, this is kind of a continuation of what we've been talking about, the staffing. Up on the top, where I'm actually pointing here, this is, every year, every district should be doing this. If you were looking at your student needs, and, you know, where kids need more, where kids need less, because of class size, or whatever the case may be, you should be adjusting. And if you don't make those adjustments, eventually, you're going to eventually have to pay the piper again. So, we know that there are certain areas where kids, we're going to need a little bit more for kids next year. Library is an example. We've talked about this several times. So, what you're seeing here, in both round three and round four, this part up here is really kind of, almost like a budget neutral, for the most part, budget neutral, to add in more in some areas, like library, tech, that's the classes, not the IT department, special ed, PE, music. So, in those areas, we know we're going to see more of a need. But to do that, again, just rather than just add, it's not smart just to add without having some sort of plan. So, while you're raising some areas, you're lowering other areas. And again, I have said this last time, I'll continue to say this, I'm not being flippant when I say, "Just take away from somewhere else." It's people's lives we're dealing with. So, I know that, and it's not an easy thing to do. But, again, if you're looking at a tight budget, and you want to remain about constant, if you want to add, where you're going to take from to get you to the same point. So, this up here is really just to keep you basically at the same point. Down below, are reductions due to budget. But let's talk about up above. Round three, you guys have already seen. So, nothing new in this section here.
This one is?
That's round four.
Okay.
So, round four, which we're at right now, what is new for tonight, is the addition of special ed of almost one person. So, it's a split between the GLP and also junior, senior high schools. So, 0.4 GLP, 0.5 a junior, senior high school. And then, what you're seeing, also is proposed reductions, our teaching assistant, as well as the aides. And I would say that PPS has done a wonderful job of saying, "We know, again, we have to just basically keep ourselves whole." So, with those aides, to be able to get that 0.9 addition of looking at 1.4 or 5 aides, which is equivalent of the same, so... So, that's just in the budget-neutral area. Down below, reductions, because, again, we know that we have a deficit to fill. You saw over here, and let me show you this, staffing reductions. We've already taken into account, with these reductions, it would save us about $229,000, okay? And again, I'd point out, we're still a little bit below where we need to be if we did everything. But 229 is part of that, and that is just up here. So, what we're actually looking at, we have not seen any budget reductions before today. So, what you're looking at, at this point, is PPS said, again, a lot of the aides are based on what the student needs are. We are going to take a hit here, but we can actually do without another 1.55, okay? Bus attendant, again, based on student needs. So, we, we do know that we should be able to do without one attendant next year. Auto bus mechanic. This one here is eliminating a bus mechanic and adding a bus mechanic helper. There is a difference in what they're going to be able to do, no doubt about it. But the savings in and of itself is, is about $20,000 right there. And teaching assistant, or, teaching assistant, right there.
Can I ask a question on that? Okay, so, this mechanic is being basically demoted to a mechanic helper?
Well, the position would be eliminated. That mechanic would have the ability to apply for the bus mechanic helper. They would automatically be moved in. No one's automatically moved in to anything. They would have to apply, interview.
Okay. So, if they already have the job, and they've been doing, you just said they're not going to be able to do certain things that the regular mechanic could do?
You cannot...
So, will you have to outsource that?
Uh, no, the other, the work would have to be picked up by the other mechanic.
Oh, so, so we have two mechanics?
Oh, yeah. We actually have three mechanics. We have a head mechanic and two mechanics. So, really, three, but one's a head mechanic.
Okay.
So, that work would have to be picked up by the other two mechanics who are still...
And these are good guys, and they're not going to have an issue?
They're all good guys.
Okay.
Again, there's no easy part. There's no employees who say, "Oh, great, let's just get rid of them." Everyone, they're all good guys.
Well, what I'm just thinking is, if this guy has been working on the motor or whatever, and now he's, well, that's not in your job description anymore, you can't work on that motor.
Correct.
That, that's just...
That's true.
Well, now, Joe, you have to do it.
Correct.
That's true.
But, you know, every department has looked to see where they can contribute to the sacrifice, transportation included, and to say, "We all would need to make some sacrifices." And this is definitely, I mean, there's no doubt, they're all sacrifices of all the reductions. We try to make the least painful ones that we can think of, and come together and talk about it.
And some of them are still very painful.
Absolutely.
I think, I think the biggest complication in the board for the budget is that, once we cut something this year, then you're going to have to find something new next year. You can't cut the same thing twice. So, what is painful, and that's a beautiful example of one, too, the assistant principal summer hours was another one, okay, is going back right where we started from, is how do you fix a budget where, where honestly, if there wasn't a GEA this year, we wouldn't even be sitting here. We'd be home today.
After last week, if there were no GEA...
Elimination.
Elimination. We would be done. We would have had to balance our budget. But with the $1.1 million that were in the hole, we have no choice. As I said last time, and I keep saying this, we're all in this together. And it's very easy for, you know, to bet one department against another, or one building against another. It's a process that we're all going to work towards and try and minimize the pain. I, I've seen what other districts have done in past years. Again, I'm not minimizing what we're doing here, because it hurts even to lose one person. We are in much better shape than a lot of other districts, no doubt about it. And again, if we, if we're consistent, and hopefully, just do a little bit each time, we won't have that ripping out the Band-Aid, falling off the cliff type of thing. So, Buildings and Grounds wanted me to point out, one of their reductions they already did this year, they were, they were going to be filling that position with a different position. So, it's not listed as a number here, but they wanted to show that they also were part of it as well.
It was listed on the other side.
Right, as an in-kind. There was no dollar, I mean, there was no reduction in money, it was just listed as a line item. So, we're not double-counting the money, we're not doing anything like that. They just wanted to point out that they've already sacrificed this year for next, go into next year.
The possible reduction in the student tech teacher piece you wanted to leave as well?
Yes, because where we saw with the addition up here for tech, right up here as an addition of the 0.34, again, you want to grow programs as much as possible, but one of the areas, it's someone who's not in-house yet. So, again, to close that gap, we had put on here, wherever I can find it on here, is to not fill that position, or not to add that position for next year. Are you seeing it here?
And what classes is that?
20.
Thank you. Right there. So, if we didn't add that for next year. So, it's not an active person who would be cut, it's just someone we would not hire.
And it's a program you wouldn't build. That was their last year, that wouldn't be. The, the complication for Tom and the administrative team and I is, is that all we can do is give you proposals. We, we can't make those decisions for you. And so, so we're, we're left at a point, and the reason for the, the board meeting tonight was to find out what you want to stay on the table for Saturday's community forum, and what is coming off the table for Saturday's community forum. No doubt, there will be a round five, in which case, everything you take off will go back on for more conversation, more clarification, more something.
Or they may want to leave everything on and have the public see it on Saturday, but it's up to you guys.
You're right.
I mean, it is your budget, so is there...
That's right, so you're right.
I have a question about the tech. Yeah. So, we're definitely going to leave that tech person off?
No, it's not a definite. This is a proposal. There's nothing that's...
This is a proposal right now that's...
Yeah.
Everything here is a proposal for you to tell us right now.
I thought I had on the one purpose we were both going to add.
Yeah, that's what we...
Right, and this is saying, we wouldn't add them. There, there is a desire to add the tech position based on what happened last year, and here we're saying with the reductions, we just wouldn't do it.
It's the same thing.
I apologize, I'm going to take off. Listen, I'm okay with this for Saturday.
You're leaving, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you, Colin.
Appreciate it.
So, the tech position is basically two classes that would allow more kids to take that as an elective.
That's right.
Correct.
Now, there's no specific classes that there will be.
I'm, I'm sure Steve Jones, who has specific ideas, is what he'd like to add in there.
They would either be the introductory courses, or they would be the next one in line. And none of those courses are sequencable right now, because we just don't have enough, enough courses to do a full sequence.
First of all, anything that anyone sees on here that is, that we should pull for Saturday? Is everyone leaving the stuff on there?
The 0.34 come off as a...
So, you want to add the tech teacher next year?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm in agreement with that. I think our tech programs, we need to really rethink that.
Now, and I'm going to say, and that's fine, not a problem, because it's your budget. What I would say, and I know I've said this before...
Where are you going to find 20K?
We are going to, number one, have to come up with a balanced budget somewhere. And so, if we're leaving additions on, we'll cut elsewhere to make up for additions. And, and I'm not pointing at you, because you said that, just in general, for the entire table here. So, we'll take that off for Saturday? Is everyone in agreement? Or do you want to leave?
I mean, I'll say this, I think we need to add, so...
I'd leave it on, just, just so...
I would leave it all for administration purposes.
It's on, I should be on there. I think it should be on there for, it doesn't mean we're going to, we're going to do it or not do it.
But why leave it on there? I think the...
You know why? So, people can see it, because everybody's at stake here. Everyone is. And the person that really wants that tech, they're going to understand it when it's up against, pitted up against the usable...
Well, you're probably not going to like my other rules on town.
I don't take it personally, don't worry, don't, do not worry.
And then, I guess, back to the reserve. I mean, my feeling, I mean, I understand we need to protect it, but at what cost? If we're going to continually protect it to cut, in the sense, at the end of the day, what are we going to have here in this district?
It's not protected to cut, it's to protect it so you can continue using it every year.
I know that, but I'm saying that in five years from now, we might still have a reserve of what's going to be in this building.
If you keep, well, now, I would say, if you keep using it to this level, you will have depleted, so you won't have it left in five years. So, if, so if you push it up beyond this, you do run that risk of doing that.
I, I agree with Tom, because if you push it up, say, another 100K, I mean, that's, you're already in 100, you're already, actually, in 60... You're already $500,000 in the hole next year, starting out. Correct. Okay, because you didn't fix the... Well, we can't, we're not going to be able to fix it.
Well...
There's no perfect solution. It's, it's either a lot of pain, or a little bit here, a little bit...
Or you delay the pay.
You know, it's a scratch, instead of losing your arm.
I, I do have something that I'd like to bring to the forum on Saturday. And now, what is this thing called, a G, a gap?
Gap Elimination Adjustment.
GEA.
GEA.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing about it more, and I'm listening about it more, and I think the people of the community have no idea about this. And I would like, what a person would like to see happen is, I'd like to see Lucinda or someone put something, before we even talk about the budget.
It's already on there. It's on the agenda for Saturday.
Put that on top. Secondly...
So, we're reading your mind.
And, and, and then...
We ask you to receive.
And also, I'd like it explained on there. And thirdly, I would like to have all the county legislators and the senators' emails on there. And I would also like to see a message that people can participate, that are in the audience, can say, "Everybody, take out your phones." Pick it, and it can also be written on a sheet of paper, that they can pick it up and take it home and do it, or pass it around to someone else, these addresses and these emails. And I think as a community...
County or state? You want the state legislators?
Yeah, you want state. County legislators don't have any...
All of them, because the county has to go down and, and fight also.
Yeah.
Who is it? Dave Pietro, whatever it is?
David De Pietro.
Michael, who did you, who did you invite?
I spoke to David's office, Gelvin's office, and Kyrshani, which Kyrshani's office said that David's is a school district, is not in his district. And then, said, well, the town of Evans is part of the Eastport School District, so I hope he'll be there. Gelvin is going to send someone. He has a prior engagement, he said. David hasn't.
Well, I, my big thing is, actions speak louder than words. And if, and if the community actually can, number one, understand what's going on and why it happened, and they can actually do something and have, participate in something. And, and I think as a, as a whole, it'll be an, an impression on them, that, oops, you don't want this happening again, I couldn't even get on my, online.
If people tweeted, texted, emailed, whatever, and just said, "Please vote no," you know, to, to eliminate the gap elimination adjustment, that's all you got to do. It doesn't have to be a very complex thing, but when you have 500 emails all coming from Eden...
It's good.
Thousand, whatever the case may be. That makes a statement. It really does.
Michael, will you work with me on that tomorrow?
Did we contact a local?
What's that?
I'll be in the car on the way to Rochester for a conference.
Did you contact a local, like Nellis?
No.
To be...
He's retiring.
Well, yeah, but some of the rules that they're making make it difficult. I just talked to Meridia today about why they were supposed to open by the first of the year, and now it's not going to be until May. And there were some things with the planning board in the town that held them up, so, you know...
The blue roof. I mean, I think Glenn should be there, but I don't know.
Yeah, it was the blue roof.
It was a blue roof.
That's the insignia of the credit union.
Why don't we talk tomorrow? And we can, we can set this up for Saturday, Mike?
And then, my third one, which is, yeah. And I guess, I understand why I'm playing, I do, but it is back to the lacrosse. What is it? Not JV?
The JV modified.
Modified. But I think that this really should pick it up. And even if it's just for this year, understand that, I thought when Jack said, "We're still fundraising for it," you know, "We're still fundraising," that I think our, our sports teams do need, you know, jerseys, equipment, and then that, for just one year, of saying, "We'll pick up lacrosse," what is it? Modified, with the understanding that they would be purchasing new jerseys to get us back up, and then say, "Hey, next year..."
On your own.
Yeah. I mean, some of these jerseys are pretty pathetic. That's all I have.
Other thoughts?
Well, can we ask Marissa, when she's looking at the potential savings, as to look at what the cost would be if we were going to do that?
The cost to add lacrosse?
For lacrosse?
And keep everything else, it's 10, it's about 100.
Okay, so maybe you could show us a scenario without lacrosse and with lacrosse. I, I mean, obviously, it's only 10 difference, but if you can figure that as part of it. We are going to have at the bat meeting next Wednesday, presentations from transportation and athletics. So, it'll be a full show, because as we see, we've not been, for one, a comment in another one of those areas tonight, so... Anything else here I should know? Anything that must come up for Saturday? It must.
Pool speakers was double-adjourned here.
Yeah, yeah. So, we're still getting them?
We should, as you can see. We talk about the timeline a little bit on terms of the budget. I know that what was up originally was the first week in April for a budget adoption.
April 8th, I believe, was the date.
April 8th, which is what a lot of school districts are really shooting after, is April 8th. Our last possible date to actually approve a budget, though, is...
April 23rd, I believe?
April 23rd. Do you know, Barb, if it's 22nd or 23rd?
22nd is the Monday that the board packets have to be back in for nomination, so I would assume...
It could be 22nd.
It might be the same day, but...
Might be the same.
Yeah, we were, do we already have one scheduled for the 22nd? Because we were going back and forth between the 8th and the 22nd.
Well, we had to do that one for the, for the BOSsies.
Yeah.
Right, the 22nd is a Tuesday, right.
So, we can adopt ours on the same day.
So, if we don't make the deadline for April 8th, we can go to April 22nd, but that's your absolute last date, because we have to put out our notices. Barb's already got one going out.
What's that again?
For adopting the budget for next year.
What was the date?
April 22nd.
April 22nd.
My guess is, we're probably going to be at the April 22nd.
And there is a board meeting scheduled already.
Yep.
Format for Saturday, do you want to explain?
Sure, it's going to be very similar to what we had for our last community forum, that seemed to have worked very well. Everyone will have a chance to speak and offer their suggestions. We are going to start with the presentation that we saw for the gap elimination adjustment. It was just such a great presentation for anyone who actually saw it, to talk about the gap elimination adjustment, what it is, and to show between the gap elimination adjustment, the governor has done a very good job of putting out there that he's giving money back to districts. And, again, I know I've said this umpteen million times, I'll say it umpteen more, he's not giving more back, he's taking less away. Make no mistake about it, he's still taking money away. We were scheduled for about a $1.3 million to be taken away from us this year. He's taken a little over $1.1 million from us this year, so.
That's all he's giving us back.
That's all he's giving us back. And when you see the presentation, you'll see, the money that he's giving back or taking less from, it's geared towards Downstate. So, Downstate's getting the majority of that restoration, or we're going to take less from you and more elsewhere.
The other thing is, the way I understood the gap elimination, is it's taking from municipalities also. It's not just the schools.
I, it started that way. I do not know if it is still for municipalities, but it definitely started that way, and.
With the tax cap for them, too.
Yep. But they can.
So, they have a tax cap as well. The difference is that they don't have to have voter approval to go to a supermajority like a school does. So, Eden, as example, their board, their council, already approved a supermajority, or, I mean, already approved going above the tax cap for Eden in terms of property taxes, if they have to. Doesn't mean they will, but if they have to, they've approved it. We can't do that without voter approval.
And, and I'm going to touch on, I've mentioned this before, but I'll probably say it a couple more times as well, on the docket for the governor is proposed legislation with a tax cap to incentivize taxpayers to ensure that boards don't go above the tax cap.
School boards.
School boards. Basically, what he's looking at is for, if this does take place next year, any school board that does not go above their tax cap, not the 1.46, but what you're allowed to go to, so for us, 1.78, taxpayers would receive a check in the mail. What a great way to make sure school boards stay within the tax cap, because people are going to get paid to make sure that, that school boards stay within the limit. Okay, what taxpayer is not going to say, do not raise my taxes, so I don't get a check? Everyone's going to say that. The following year, you, and I want to make sure I say this right, so please forgive me if I get it wrong, of your tax cap for a portion of the tax cap, you have to show a savings of 1% of the increase, if I'm saying that exactly right. So, for us, it would basically be roughly about $100,000 in savings. So, what is he doing for '14, '15? He's definitely disincentivizing you from saving next year, because it has to be new savings for consolidations of services amongst school districts in the year '15, '16.
So, like, our, our football consolidation won't count, because it's not new?
Because it's taking place next year. So, anything that we do for consolidation next year, wonderful and great, however, does not count. Does not count going forward as new. So, you've already done it, thank you very much, keep moving on, show us brand-new savings in '15, '16.
I think we should go forward with the football team and then.
Oh, it's already doing, and we're already.
And then say, we're done, we're not doing this, and then the next day, come back in and reinstate it.
So.
It is a one-year program, Marissa.
In '15, '16, it's a 1% savings for the consolidation of services. In '16, '17, it would be a 2%, and in '17, '18, it would be a 3%. I have yet to see anything that the governor's proposed that has not gone through, so, and, by the way, with the tax cap limit, they set the tax cap limit, not us.
They're going to lower it.
So, where we were at 2% last year, he said, oh, wait a minute, it's tied to CPI, 2% is too high, you're at 1.46. Next year, there's no guarantee it's going to stay at 1.46. It could go to 1, it could go to 0, it could go negative.
He has a goal, I think we have to acknowledge that, that the goal is to cut the number of school districts in half, and he's going to figure out a way to do it during his time.
Yeah, but he's up for reelection in November.
This year.
This year.
Yeah, and, again, he's going to incentivize taxpayers by saying, I'll give you a check. Oh, that'll play very well for his reelection.
The veterans are all for it, because he's giving them tax breaks.
Yes.
Plus, I mean, to be honest, his popularity, there's no else in the state that's going to run against him.
Correct.
And Downstate, Downstate, he's giving everything to, and that's just going to elect him.
Absolutely. And so, when we say.
And I'm a Republican, I wouldn't vote for him.
And I'm just pontificating for a second, as if I haven't enough. It's really, we're pigeonholed into this spot-up, being forced to do these reductions, and making very tough choices. And, as I said, we would be done at this point. So, you know what? We have to work together to get through this. And I think the way that we're structured, we can, as long as we're smarter over the next couple of years, we'll be one to survive. And for me, you'll get my conservative approach, make sure we do, but.
He might go for the presidency, then we.
I think, I think he will. So.
And then Trump will come in, if it's coming.
Yeah, okay.
But I, I think it's a really good point, what Tom makes, is that nothing that, everything that the governor has proposed has gone through. You can tell by the, the number of people who are not here tonight, that they are not concerned. But yet, if you read the paper out there, you recognize that every district has concerns. If you read the paper, they talk about the gap elimination budget, but there's so much of it to know that most of us don't know anything about it.